OSPI distress schools grant award architectural and engineering services contract P-1580 to Malum Architects, Inc. for the co elementary school classroom addition project. This came before Ops October 4th for...approval? For approval?
Approval.
Motion please.
Everybody shuffles through their paper really quickly. Number seven. I move that the school board A authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Malum Architects for the co elementary school classroom addition project in the amount of $1,048,251 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $20,000 with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. And B authorize the superintendent to accept and obligate distressed school grant funds for this contract.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. Director Pinkham.
Excuse me. Mr. Hurd, your last board meeting with us?
Yes.
You sound sad. But I just wanted, one, make sure that we do highlight what the additions were since it was introduced. And there was public comment on this asking issues such as impacts on playground space. And I pulled it because there was going to be comments, but if you're here and heard them, if you can address them, I think that would help.
Yes. Flip Hurdin, Associate Superintendent of Operations and Facilities. The only change in the language was that requested by the board in the last meeting about accepting distressed schools grants from the state. We've worked with the General Counsel Office on making that change. That's the only change between intro and action. As far as impact on playground space, the co addition does not impact playground space. The addition is to the west, to the, sorry, to the east of the building, sixth classroom addition on the east side of the building.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number eight from the consent calendar. OSPI distress schools grant award architectural and engineering services contract P-1579 to Malum Architects, Inc. for the Magnolia Elementary School Phase II Classroom Addition Project. Came before Ops October 4th for...
Approval?
Motion please.
I move that the school board A authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Malum Architects for the Magnolia Elementary School Phase II Classroom Addition Project in the amount of $543,938 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $20,000 with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. And B authorize the superintendent to accept and obligate distressed school grant funds for this contract.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. Director Pinkham.
Just almost ditto from the other one, but one of the highlights, I think, of the questions there has the proposed Magnolia K through class size reduction been evaluated as a site-specific academic priority. There's another question about the enrollment drop, but I think, for me, we got to prepare for the future, not what happened, which I think was a normative issue.
So again, the change in this one was again to the, only change between intro and action was the change the board requested on the language of acceptance distressed schools grant. In this particular case, the addition does slightly impact play space about 2,000 square feet. That's about as efficient as we can get on that particular site. It's a very, very tight site. At some point, I'm sure board directors will go out and take a visit. Again, another wonderful addition. It will look great by the time it's done. A little bit different from the co-location, there is a park that's close by. It's very similar to many of our other schools. It would be akin to Cedar Park, Fairmount Park. In this particular case, it was a park that was part of the location originally that SPS owned. However, they did sell that portion of that property to the Parks and Rec District. Therefore, we no longer own that particular portion, but our students would be able to probably have access. They just wouldn't have exclusive access during the day. So much like Fairmount Park, if you ever go over there during the day, they have supervision. Students use that grass area. In this particular case for Magnolia, it's a little bit of a hill climb, but, so you'd have to have an adult go down there. But it is literally the property adjacent to the school property.
Director Mack?
That was going to be my question, is to talk a little bit about that. And so is the district in the process of having the agreement put in place so that the school can use that during school hours? The park? And for some reason, I'm blanking on the name of the park, but it is actually an amazing park with an amazing view.
Yeah.
You should go visit it. It's beautiful. But can you tell me a little bit about the process for the school getting access to use that during school time?
So the process has been with parks, because we do not have the exclusivity of the park, so they can't just shut down the park during school hours. It's just, we will occupy most of that play space, but they can't prevent the public from coming in and using that. A little bit different, again, from the Fairmount Park and maybe a couple of other parks that are used. There are no restroom facilities on that particular park, so the supervision is really more line of sight. The concern that you have in some of the other ones with facilities is if students were being able to go into a building, you'd have to make sure that there's somebody there. In this case, that isn't the case. This is an open park area. Students would go down there. It wouldn't be closed to the public, but chances are, if you have someone from the public going there and they see 40 children around in the grass, they may decide to come back later. But that would be up to them. So it's not part of the joint use agreement. Could probably talk about it, but generally, Parks has been pretty reluctant to carve out exclusive use for that time because it's a public park. So we just kind of make sure we provide supervision for the children when they're there during that time.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call please.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, we are at C. Action items. Number one, 2018-19 legislative agenda. This came before Exec Committee October 11th for consideration. Motion please.
I move that the school board adopt the 2018-19 legislative agenda as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Welcome to my world. Okay. Did you wish to give a short rendition of this legislative agenda? I think it's worthwhile to do because we're on video and we know that there are thousands of people watching us.
So as noted earlier in the introduction, this follows Board Policy 1225. This follows our regular and annual effort to have a broad legislative agenda to address key issues in Olympia. It is actually quite simple, similar to what we presented to you last year because there are a number of funding challenges that continue to exist. There are callouts for sustainable funding for K-12. That has been an ongoing challenge for our state for over 30 years, and we're not there yet. It calls out for support with capital funding, and there are some issues to help us with addressing the opportunity gap.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack, short please.
Yeah, I just wanted to also let folks know that this legislative agenda is not done in a vacuum. In particular, the statement around levy authority is in line with WASD's adopted policy statement, which is, it's a lot longer than what ours is, but they make the statement that raising the amount of maximum levy funding available to districts from $1.50 per thousand square feet of assessed value to $2 per thousand feet of assessed value, get tripped up, or $2,500 per student, whichever is greater. Right now, the law says whichever is less, which leaves us with the $2,500 cap. The whichever is greater would be more appropriate and allow us to actually access appropriate dollars, and WASD is in line with our legislative platform to focus on that issue.
Director Burke?
I'll throw on the CNI hat momentarily. Under the third priority, eliminate opportunity gaps. One of the items there is one that's had a fair amount of conversation among the board and locally and nationally, is fair and equitable assessment to adopt an alternative assessment framework to allow use of assessments other than smarter balanced assessments. And I just want to be really clear and transparent that that is not eliminating assessments. That is effective use of assessments and assessments that provide value back to our students and to our system.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call please.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number two, replacement for educational programs and operations levy. Resolution number 1819-2. This came before ANF October 8th for...
Approval.
Motion please.
I move that the Seattle School Board accept the proposed replacement for educational programs and operations levy and adopt Resolution 18/19-2, which places a three-year levy totaling $815 million on the February 12th, 2019 ballot as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call please.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Outstanding. Number three, approval of facilities master plan update 2018 for Building Excellence, BECS V, capital levy, came before Ops October 4th for...
Consideration.
Motion please.
I move that the school board approve the facilities master plan update 2018 as attached to this board action report.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have some questions, and I'm hoping that General Counsel can come address them as Scrivener errors, the definition of a closed school, specifically the one that I'm ever so aware of, Schmitz Park, that is not in fact closed. How are we going to clean that up?
Yes, Noel Tree, General Counsel, you're correct. I think the document in a number of places refers to Schmitz Park as closed, which it's not. I think that's the type of thing under the policy that we can change as a Scrivener's error, so following board action, staff can eliminate those references to closed and then post the final document in that format.
Thank you, and thank you to the public for pointing that out. Director Mack?
Yes, thank you for that, and also note that pages 10 and 11 have the building classifications of essential, which is actually, that is an important piece, and the addresses. I did notice the Old Van Assault on page 11 interim site is at the same address as the Old Van Assault original building site, and just wanted clarification on that because it's exact same, same name, same address, but listed twice.
Correct. If you were to take a look at those and have been to that particular site, there are actually two buildings. So one was built in 1909. That's the one we refer to as the wood frame building. That's the smaller one, and in the, on that page, you can also see that it's referenced at 15,000, about 15,000, 13,000 square feet. That hasn't been used as a school in decades. Going inside would probably be appropriate tomorrow on Halloween. It'd probably be a pretty scary place to be.
Cool.
It's a little creepy, but interesting place. Definitely interesting inside, old. It's currently used, I think we have some items in there just for storage, but that's pretty much it. The other reference is to the interim site, Original Van Assault Building, which is more the concrete block building, which is currently going to be used as an interim site. That's listed at about 55,000 square feet. So the square footage alone kind of points out the two actual structures on the site, and yes, they do have the same address because they are on the same site. But deliveries wouldn't be going to the wood frame building, they'd come to the concrete building.
And then for further clarification, Van Assault is now at the building named the African American Academy, or is it, so the building is actually technically called African American Academy, the 8311?
Correct. So that's farther south on Beacon Avenue, and if you go up to that building, the signage on the actual building, like in cement, says African American Academy, but it is Van Assault at the African American Academy building.
Great. Thank you for the clarification and making sure that the document's correct.
Your bet.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham?
On the growth trends and enrollment projections, and I was asking if somehow we can acknowledge the indigenous people of this area, and I see that has been added, and then I read this, "Seattle is named for chief self of the Duwamis and Kwamis tribes. The Duwamis tribe is considered indigenous natives and have been living in the current metropolitan Seattle area since the end of the last glacial period." I do have a bit concerned with we adding that since the last glacial period because that almost talks about, to me infers, the land bridge theory that they weren't here before the glacial period.
Are you asking for an edit?
So I'd ask for an edit, or did we consult with the Duwamis and Kwamis tribes and got that language from them?
I can figure out where that came from, but certainly if, as a board, you wanted to edit or strike part of that sentence, you could certainly do so, and we can update the document. I'm not sure if that fits in also to the same parameters. I think you'd have to check with General Counsel on that, but we'd be happy to edit the document.
Can you also clarify when the last glacial period is? Because, I mean, I just want to be thoughtful. Yes, I hear Director Pinkham's concerns, but it, to my knowledge, that was a long, long time ago, so I think if you're going to use that, just be more specific, but I don't necessarily hear the same concern, so.
From, probably from a technical perspective, that sounds substantive enough that we couldn't do that as a, as some sort of Scrivener error, so if we wanted to make a change to that, we'd probably need an amendment, or we could go forward with the plan as drafted tonight, do some research, and bring it back at a later date if we needed to readjust that language down the road. I think one, one thing to note is just our policies required adoption of the facilities master plan before you move forward with the next BECS levy, so we, it's important to consider both those items tonight in whatever format you wish.
So just, if I can, just one comment on that particular language and why that narrative was used. It's my understanding that that's the narrative that the city of Seattle uses in describing the land, so I think that's where that language came from.
I guess I might have to talk to the city of Seattle about some things as well, but I guess if we can, see if I can come up with some kind of amendment to the language here, so we can move it forward today instead of delaying it.
Resident paleontologist Deputy Steven Nielsen said the last glacial period was 10,000 years ago.
Oh, he played the Google song.
Or maybe just reflect with OSPI since time immemorial, just say metropolitan area since time immemorial. I don't know if that would be something...
I saw some head nodding here. Do we have consensus since time immemorial and get rid of the last glacial age? Make your amendment. I'll give you a second.
So I move that we amend the sentence in the document reads, "The Duwamis tribe is considered indigenous natives and have been living in the current metropolitan area since the end of the last glacial period," to change the last portion of that to say since time immemorial.
Second. Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Point to personal privilege. This was a very heavy lift. This required hundreds of hours of staff time, probably 100 or two hours of Director Mack's time, and we had a committee that worked very hard as well, and we were way behind the curve, but not only did we catch up, we did a stellar job, and I thank those folks, and please send our thanks to the committee as well. Roll call please.
And just a reminder, you need to vote on the amendment and then...
On the amendment! He didn't let me finish.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This amendment has passed unanimously.
Okay, let's go to the main motion as amended. Tough crowd here. Roll call please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion as amended has passed unanimously.
Number three, approval of facilities master...
Four.
Number four. You guys took me off my role. Building Excellence, BECS V, capital levy program and authorizing resolution 2018-19-6 came before Ops October 4th for...
Consideration.
Motion please.
I move the board adopt Resolution 2018/19-6, placing a six-year capital levy on the February 12th, 2019 special election ballot for voter approval to fund the Building Excellence BECS V Capital Levy Program.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? This is a very big deal. Director Mack?
I have a question just for clarification. Has there been any changes since introduction? It doesn't say that there has, so there hasn't been anything that actually has been altered?
There has not been.
Director Burke?
I just want to honor my friends at Sacagawea and let you know the gift that they provided us around these, that I've distributed to directors. During our visit, we got the tour of their facility, and so I have two, kind of a little bit in the weeds questions that, for Superintendent Hurdin. The work in Sacagawea, is it intended to include playground resurfacing and ADA accessibility?
I believe those are the two projects targeted for Sacagawea, correct?
Thank you.
Director Gary, please.
I just want to point out that the last one, two, three items are a reflection on the hard work that has been done under your leadership, and so again, thank you for all of this. It's been, these are just such big, big issues and take such tremendous amount of work, and so thank you to you, thank you to Director Mack as the Chair of Ops for all the effort that has gone in on these combined items.
Thank you.
Director Mack?
I want to say a huge thank you to staff and to the community members that engaged, and my fellow board colleagues, and I feel incredibly grateful to the responsiveness that we, we had during this process to come up with a package that is as responsive as we potentially can be. I wish we could do more. I wish we could do a lot more. We need to do a lot more. We need more money to do that, so I'm grateful, I'm just, I'm really grateful for the package that we're looking at here, and I'm hopeful that the voters will support us in February because these are such important, important...
Needs.
Important needs, buildings. They're critical to our students' learning, so a big thank you and onward.
Madam Superintendent, please. I guess I would just like to add my congratulations to Seattle Public Schools and thank you to the board for taking a strong stand and on this vote tonight, and all the work of your committees and your, everything that you've done, Director Mack, I think has led to this culminating event, and I think it's a really important moment for Seattle Public Schools, both this BECS levy and the operations levy. It's just so important to the work of this district, and as the superintendent and leader of the school system, I am just really appreciative for everybody who's had a part to play in it, who have, has spent their time, and to the staff, of course, who has, have been leaders in this effort. Just super appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and I just really look forward to all of this work and working with the voters to get it passed, and the good things that are going to happen for Seattle Public School students as a result of it, so thank you.
Director DeWolf, please.
Thank you, and I just also wanted, not only to thank Eden and all the work that you've done, Director Mack, on this, and the staff, thank you, Flip, but I think just to really also share gratitude for our community over the last couple of decades for really supporting our public schools and public education. I know it is a huge investment of our neighbors and voters across the city to put their dollars into our schools, and so please know that we are so grateful for your support. Each, each year we bring these up, but also that you are, you, you own our public schools, and we're really grateful for that, and I hope that you continue to turn out and support our schools to make sure that we're providing high-quality education for every kid.
Director Burke?
I appreciate the way you phrased that, Director DeWolf. I think that's really spot on. One of the things that I heard regularly from the community when, you know, we're struggling with, how do we go out and ask the community for more money when they're already feeling tax fatigue? And the feedback that I got was, make it relevant, reach as many schools as possible, keep equity as the focus, and be fiscally responsible. And so I just wanted to share my experience with, with this board and this staff that I believe that the, the dollars that we're talking about here are in really good hands in terms of being relentless, trying to find places where we can reduce costs, operate efficiently, stay on time, on budget, and deliver amazing things for our kids. And I'm reminded that this investment is, is paying it forward for a whole bunch of other people that are going to get investments in the future, and it's also a bunch of people who have waited, who have historically invested but haven't received direct benefits, are getting them on this cycle. And while we'd love to provide more projects for more people across the district, there's a time component, and I actually heard that reflected a lot from community saying, well, we thought we were going to be on this time and this time, but we recognize, you know, Rainier Beach is really important, and we'll wait until next time. And so that was just really kind of uplifting, and I think it created the environment that we could put this on the ballot.
I believe I will wrap it up then. Certainly, this district has received some criticism. Certainly, this district has received some criticism about the amount of levies. And I would invite those folks who criticize to come meet with us, collaborate with us, and we can show you the value and the transparency and the earned trust by this district and this board. And we're going to take it to the streets and we are going to pass this for the future of our children and our city. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Yep.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number five, repeal of policy 2023 classroom use of electronically accessible materials and approval of new policy 2023 digital citizenship and media literacy. This came before CNI October 5.
For approval.
Motion, please.
I move that the school board repeal policy 2023 classroom use of electronically accessible materials and replace it with the new policy 2023 digital citizenship and media literacy as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
Okay, we had a robust discussion at intro, so this better be a new question, comment, or concern. Any of my colleagues? Please, Director Patu.
I'd like to find out, what's the difference between digital citizenship and media literacy?
Those two terms are actually defined within the policy language itself. And of course, if you could refer to that, you can see that. But digital literacy, of course, referring to the need for students to understand the use of those instructional materials within the classroom. And then the media literacy is the use of online resources.
Thank you. Director DeWolff, please.
I just wanted to just share gratitude for the inclusion of the being able to interpret all forms of bias, including racial and other forms of explicit and implicit bias. So thank you for including that.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
I just appreciate the clarity in the changes that were made to show what's being repealed. And thank you.
See, no further comments, questions, concerns. Roll call, please.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number six, annual approval of programs of schools using the alternative learning experience model and review of policy number 2255, alternative learning experience schools or programs came before CNI October 5.
For approval.
Motion, please.
I move that the board approve the Cascade Parent Partnership Program, Interagency Academy School, Nova High School, and Middle College School as the district's alternative learning experiences programs. And having reviewed policy number 2255, alternative learning experience schools or programs, approve continuation of the policy with no amendments at this time.
I second the motion.
Director DeWolff?
I just want to use this moment to share how much I appreciate and I'm grateful for these programs in our schools and really hope we can improve our communication and outreach to the students that might benefit from this. I am really proud of these programs and so thank you for supporting them and hope we can do a better job of supporting them in the future.
Director Gary?
So I just want to take a moment to underscore the participation of our middle college, high school students today. I heard Gareth Locke say he wished he had been advised of these kinds of programs from his high school counselors. And I heard Arianna Phillips say if she had known about these programs in middle school, she may have saved many hours in trouble within her school or something to that effect.
Teachers and herself, quote unquote.
Teachers and herself. I think she's giving herself some credit for creating a few gray hairs out there. But I heard her and I was very sincere in my question about thinking creatively on how it is that we let our students know that these programs exist at the moment when they start feeling the need for something different. And this is going to give us an opportunity to think more about that and do that, I hope, because it's one thing, what I have found is that from a parent's perspective, when your student starts going sideways, there's so much fear and even potentially grief in the loss of that anticipated high school experience. I think student, parents see their students as, you know, they project what it's going to be to be a high school student. And when that doesn't happen, they may, they may not be thinking that they want their student to go into these kinds of settings. And so sometimes we have to reach them through the students. And that's going to look different. I'm not saying every parent would be that way, but we have to put on both caps in terms of marketing and informing our public because sometimes it's going to be the student, him or herself, themselves, who will need to figure that out. And we've just got to be mindful that this is so very important to capture and catch them as they're, before they start following. So.
Michael, if I had a nickel for every hour you and I have spent talking about these programs, I'd be a rich woman. We've made some really significant mistakes. And I'm pleased that we're recognizing those and that we're changing things, but I don't want to hear about these schools with deficit language ever again. I see smoke out Harris's ears. We talk some about, well, the comprehensive high schools are doing such a much better job and that's why our enrollment is down. Correlation does not make causation. We have not done right by these schools. I swear I will pay out of my own cheap pocket to hire a secret shopper to figure out why we can't embrace alternative education. It works and most importantly, it saves lives. Rant over. Director Pinkham?
I just want to also, if we can acknowledge that Middle College, how many sites do they have?
Currently, three sites.
And those sites are?
Northgate Mall site, an association with the Simon Youth Programming, University of Washington, and Seattle University.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge those.
And no, we do not have a Southwest site because we closed it arbitrarily and capriciously with no notice after we starved them.
And in the motion, we just refer to it as Middle College, but then in the official name of the school is Middle College.
Middle College High School.
And but then in some of the documents, we add the trailer to it for social justice or of social justice.
Yes, that's correct.
What is the official name of the school?
We refer to it as Middle College High School, but as an additional descriptor, we do add the social justice description.
So the official name of it is Middle College High School? Or is it Middle College High School of Social Justice?
I would say it would be Middle College High School of Social Justice.
How is it listed in the facilities master plan? And do we need to go through OSPI for renaming?
I don't have that information. We'll have to, I'm looking to that.
Mr. General Counsel, can we do a Scrivener's cleanup on this once we get that information? Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Patu?
Do we actually recruit or actually advertise this program to kids for students that actually are looking for that kind of education? Because I remember when I used to work in the school, I actually literally had to go find out what was available for our kids that actually that can handle regular schools. And if this program is successful in terms of handling those kind of students, I believe that it's our obligation to actually to be able to advertise what's available for our kids.
Okay, I, again, those kind of students can't handle is tricky language because these are not quote unquote safety net schools. These are alternative schools. We all learn differently. We all have different needs. And I couldn't agree with you more that we need to recruit and we need to advertise, but we've also got to change the frame of our language. Is that a fair comment, Associate Superintendent Tolly?
That is correct. And I have been working with the principals of these schools to come up with a different model, actually. In fact, at the recent school board work session, we talked about transitioning Middle College High School, the school that we were just talking about, into an early college model. Currently, the school accepts enrollment of students in 11th and 12th grade. We're wanting to move it to a 9th through 12th program and be more proactive in addressing the needs of our students in that way. So that would be an early college model where the students would progress towards, in partnership with our local Seattle colleges, an AA degree as well as a diploma. But that's something to work towards. Currently, the model is of a 11th and 12th grade program for Middle College. But if the board chooses to approve the changes to the student assignment plan, we would make it a 9th through 12th program.
I apologize for my passion on this one, but it is about as deep seated and held as anything I know.
And I might note, actually, I'm thinking, why couldn't we extend it from ninth on? You know, I think I heard him right, said that it's at a certain grade level.
We're working on that, but that is not part of the resolution tonight. So I'm going to put you out of order until that comes up. But I assure you, Director Patu, it's coming. Director Burke, please.
I was, didn't quite follow the conversation as far as where we ended up in the naming around Middle College. That when I look at what's in the facilities master plan and what's on OSPI, it is Middle College High School. The additional content or the descriptor, is that something that is going to be part of the formal thing or is currently part of? And will it be per OSPI? Is that?
That is a process that we can look at. Right now, as I mentioned, we typically refer to it as Middle College High School, but we do add the social justice line as well.
Okay, so the official designator right now within the system is Middle College High School, but the friendly name is the more comprehensive?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number seven, approval of courses with new content as defined by Superintendent Procedure 2026, CNI October 5th for.
Approval.
Motion, please, sir.
I move that the school board approve the courses, including an ethnic studies course as set forth in the board action report.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Patu?
Now, is this course actually is going to be offered to high school kids?
Yes, ma'am.
Not middle school kids?
It will be, I believe, offered to middle school kids in the future because we are embedding ethnic studies as part of our array of curriculum and because we need it. But tonight, we're voting on a high school course. Thank you. Director Mack?
I wanted to comment that I feel that the new science courses probably should be on this list personally. And so I'm wondering, in the future, if we need to look at how our policy is laid out for that because we have a whole new science course sequence thing. But I'm supportive of this entire action tonight, especially because we have courses for how many different languages on here?
I don't know the exact number of languages that are listed, but quite a few in order to provide the ability to award students credits based on competency demonstrated through an assessment. So if their home language, if they are able to demonstrate competency in a language other than English, we can award credit for that based on policy.
Which is a really amazing thing that students are being awarded that credit and given the opportunity to retain a gift of a native language. And there's languages here I didn't even know existed. So it's amazing and I'm just grateful for that.
I would like to note that I have been working with staff to identify a process for assessing the competency level of native languages. And we anticipate returning to the board in January with an additional list of new courses with new course content and that we would add that, those courses to that list if we were able to identify an assessment that is appropriate. We're currently working with the University of Washington to determine if that's possible.
Director Burke and then Director DeWolff?
I want to acknowledge Director Mack's concerned question around science and recognize that the, you know, the distinction between course adoption versus course alignment, whereas alignment represents the reordering of existing content and adoption represents changes in content. The guidance that we were provided is that the science work is a realignment and it doesn't have new content. Personally, I am still not satisfied with that. I believe that we, we needed to do a more comprehensive engagement, but I'm really grateful for the work the science team is doing to try to lift it. I think we learned a lot in that process. And I think that holding hands as we walk forward and making sure that the courses, whether they're courses aligned, adopted, whatever policy spin language we put on it, that our kids get some amazing science content in whatever structure we build it in. The kids just need to get some amazing science content and learn to mastery however you want to structure it. That's my ask.
And my ask of Associate, excuse me, Director DeWolff, you are next. I apologize.
Thank you. I just wanted to elevate the fact that I think this is a really big milestone in the process, particularly as it pertains to our ethnic studies course. So thank you for shepherding this work forward. I mean, we have some really exciting things to celebrate tonight with Bex and operations and our, and our other, I can't even remember the long name of it, the educational programs and operations levy. Really great things to celebrate tonight, but I hope folks watching at home and who are sharing this story wherever on Facebook or otherwise, this is a really, really big milestone as it pertains to our ethnic studies commitment. So I'm really excited about moving this forward. So thank you for that work.
Thank you. And I also would like to point out, we did include within the course description the language that you requested in terms of the relationship of Native Americans to the land.
Thank you.
Director Patu?
I also want to say, as a longtime board director, this is actually great to finally see this go through. So I'm really very happy.
Director Burke? Well, this board rocks. We may be mouthy, but by God, we deliver. Roll call, please.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
This meeting is adjourned at 7:58 and the board will immediately be recessing to the executive session to discuss potential litigation, which is. the executive session to discuss potential litigation, which is scheduled for 15 minutes with an anticipated end time of 8:15. The meeting will adjourn at the conclusion of the executive session. Thanks all for being here, much, much appreciate.